I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 10th, 2025 meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. If you're here to speak during the public hearing portion of our agenda, please wait until I've opened the public hearing. Once opened, one person at a time may come to the podium and be recognized by me. Please speak clearly into the microphone and begin by giving us your name and address. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and we ask that you please address your comments only to the commission. I now call the meeting to order at one minute after six. Commissioner Dutton, would you please lead us in an indication in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, as we gather for this meeting, we ask for your wisdom and guidance. May your spirit inspire us to make decisions that are just, fair, and beneficial to our community. Grant us the ability to listen to each other with respect and to work together in unity. We ask for your blessing on all deliberations. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have before us tonight's agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve.
Second. Hold on, I think we have a comment at the podium.
Sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. Item 6.3 on our agenda this evening is a text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution. This was staff-initiated, and Washington County staff has requested that we remove this item from the agenda this evening.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll strike that item if the commission approves that as a change to the agenda. Any other changes?
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve with the requested change removing item 6.3.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, except dropping 6.3, a text amendment by Washington County per their request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have the minutes from the May 13th meeting that have been presented and are before you. Do you have any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination or make a recommendation to approve the minutes after reviewing them.
Second.
All right, have a motion to approve the minutes as presented and a second. Any change, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we're up to our public comment section of the agenda, and I think we have two people have registered ahead of time for public comment. I'll ask you to please come forward or if you could raise your hand if you're here for public comment. Okay, the two here. If you could come to the podium and give us your name and address and please address your comments to the commission, you'll have three minutes.
Name is Richard Roberts. Address is 3406 Browns Mill Road. I'm coming in in the, well, I'll just put this. Good evening, my name's Richard Roberts. On behalf of my wife, Bettina, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight against the proposal to rezone the property from RP2 to RP3 that you're proposing to change. Just recently, my wife and I purchased the 10-acre directly across the road with the intent to build our retirement dream home on the land. We purchased the property because of the beautiful views, neighborhood, Johnson City area, and most of all, because our three grandchildren live next door. We are asking the commission to strongly consider five keys in the decision about this. Rezoning, first, the impact on the environment, the impact on the traffic and transportation, third, the impact of noise levels, pollution, fourth, the impact on character and appearances of the area, and fifth, and most importantly, the impact on neighboring privacy, excuse me, properties and the privacy of those properties. There is already substantial amount of traffic on Browns Mill, and adding another congested area and a curve is going to eventually require the city to consider cost of widening the road, which I saw is partially in the plans, will impact us on our 100-foot easement of the property we purchased. Adding more traffic will increase there's more accidents and what would come even more busy throughout our thoroughfare, and all we can think about is the safety of our three grandchildren, other children in the Browns Mill Road communities that are to the rear and our next-door neighbors. Adding more traffic aids, no adds, no excuse me, to otherwise fairly quiet neighborhood, and certainly adding 44 more properties, which you've indicated they're single-family homes with garages, single garage, with the additional traffic associated with the development will add to the noise levels at all hours of the day, which they're already. This area has been maintained aesthetically, and when my wife and I purchased land just three months ago, we couldn't wait to start building our home to face those beautiful Blue Ridge Mountains. We certainly did not, and I do say did not, expect we'd be facing 44 townhomes in our front yard. We asking the commission to vote against the rezoning proposal to rezone the property from RP2 to RP3.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Mr. Adam Huckabee, are you here? Could we get your name and address, please?
My name is Adam Huckabee. I am at 3406 Browns Mill Road. So that's my father-in-law that was just up here. And to conclude what he was saying is, we bought our property back in 2023. When we bought our property, it took us, we looked high and low for properties from here to Knoxville. We finally came in Johnson City, and we felt home when we bought our home here. We could sit outside, and there was not hardly any cars coming down Browns Mill Road from the roundabout, going up to Chickasaw, going up towards 36. And now at this time, we have so much traffic because everyone has figured out that this is kind of a cut-through now, and we have now recently, over the last couple of months, have cars that are coming around curves that are supposed to be going 35 miles an hour, but they're ending up in our drive, in our yard. And now we're going to add 44 more properties, townhomes, and doing the calculations, not usually just one car per family or per home, there's usually two or more. And so therefore, now you have, instead of just 44 more cars coming, we have 88 cars plus people coming to visit. And where they're proposing to put this drive is in a curve, a very bad curve. The property that my father-in-law and mother-in-law have bought is in that curve right there by Chickasaw Road going up. I have now witnessed, now that I'm more observant for that property, cars actually, tire tracks, people in there, we've had two drunk, you know, DUIs that have ended up in the ditch right there, and people coming up to our door at hours and nights, ringing our doorbell. We have more public traffic, you know, foot traffic coming into our property, walking through, coming down in there, which is not safe for my children. You know, I can't even have, kids can't have the life that a lot of us had, be able to play out in the front yard. And now we're going to add more homes and more foot traffic. I know they're trying to add a sidewalk on the other side of Browns Mill. We're going to have more foot traffic. We have a lot of that already, we're just trying to keep it quaint as Johnson City used to be and everything. I used to come visit here with my uncle. When I was younger, he moved here in early 90s and just come and visit, and it was a quiet town. And it feels to me that it's getting so big, so fast, that we don't have the infrastructure to handle it. And now we're, again, adding 44 more homes if it is rezoned that way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes our section on public comment. We have no one else registered to comment, so we'll move directly into our section on new business. The first item is the topic that has been recently discussed, the rezoning on Browns Mill Road. Callie McGrew, I think you're up for presenting from staff.
My name is Callie McGrew, planner with Development Services. This is a request to rezone.
Pull the mic down.
I'm sorry?
Pull the mic a little closer.
Oh.
Is it okay?
I don't like when we do that.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. This is a request to rezone a property on Browns Mill Road from RP2 to RP3. The site is 5.27 acres along Browns Mill Road. This is Walmart, Carroll Creek Road, and North Rowan Street over here. The proposal is for 44 townhomes with attached single-car garages. The current zoning is RP2, planned residential, and the surrounding zoning is R2, low-density residential, R3, medium-density residential, some R5, high-density, and some B4 arterial business. But the main zoning around this site is low-density residential. In 2024, this property was rezoned for the recreational use of pickleball courts and volleyball courts. Since then, developers decided that the market is trending more towards housing and wants to maximize the use of the land, so he's wanting, he's proposed as residential The property is currently vacant, and the proposed use, again, is residential for 44 townhomes. With the density for this proposal, the RP2 to RP3 is, RP2 allows for three and four tenths of an acre, units per acre, which was 17 units total. The RP3 bumps that to eight and a half units per acre, so this site would be maxed out at the density of 44 units. Physical characteristics, it's pretty flat, it has a gradual slope towards the interstate, but not too much. And for development requirements, this is the site plan provided by the developer. Again, the current zoning is RP2, which allows a max of 17 units. Requested district is RP3, allows a max of 44 units. Parking requirements is 88 spaces, but the developer has depicted on the site plan that they're going to provide 115 spaces. The sidewalk will be built from the entrance of the development down to, I didn't put this on there, I'm sorry, down to Butler Road, which connects to the existing sidewalk at the roundabout. And there's a type 1 landscaping buffer required for the back part of the property here, and it is depicted on the site plan. There's also an open space requirement. I think the requirement is 15% open space with half of that being active open space. It's also depicted on the site plan in the clubhouse, potential playground or open field that could be used for a dog park. And then lastly, to mitigate traffic concerns, a left turn lane and a right deceleration lane are required. This is our timeline, so we're here for the first public hearing on Planning Commission, but this will have to go through three readings if moves forward tonight. It will go through three readings at the city commission before finally approved. We held the neighborhood meeting on June 4th at 5:30 in the administrative conference room. We received comments from attendees regarding traffic and pedestrian safety concerns, increased traffic on Browns Mill Road, school bus stops, stop locations, and capacity on the school system, public transportation. There's not any public transportation routes there, so there are concerns about that. And then possible site distance obstructions coming in and out of the development. Staff recommends approval to rezone this property from RP2 to RP3 based on the following. The proposed zoning district supports the city's goals for increasing housing supply. The location of the site is appropriate, given its proximity to the interstate, separated from low-density neighborhoods, and it's accessible to a collector roadway. And the proposed residential use is, even though it's higher density, it's still residential in character. And then our bridge plan policy 2.5.1 supports this as it's the policy of the city to provide multifamily development in appropriate locations. Your options for this evening, to approve the rezoning at zero Browns Mill Road from RP2 to RP3, deny the rezoning from RP2 to RP3, or defer action to a later date.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff?
I've got a question. The sidewalk is quite lengthy from the subject property all the way down to Butler, most of which is not touching the subject property itself. Who is paying for that? Is that developer incurring the cost of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm curious, how many people were at the neighborhood meeting?
I think we had eight.
I have a question. Has the traffic folks identified any sightline issues?
They haven't. They said the only requirement was the left and right turn lanes.
I think when this came before the city commission, as a pickleball thing, we talked about the sidewalk, and instead of requiring a sidewalk that they would put into the sidewalk fund, is that still an option instead of actually building that sidewalk?
I'm not sure about that. I can find out for you.
I think it was referenced in the packet during the most previous rezoning. Staff and the developer agreed that due to feasibility and topographic concerns, a sidewalk would be constructed from the existing sidewalk at Butler to the entrance of the new development due to the feasibility and topography of this location. But that's an exception from what would typically be required.
In thinking about those turn lanes, the deceleration, the left turn lane, can you tell us a little bit about how, since there are concerns about safety and that that is in the curve of a road, how do we determine the length of both of those lanes to ensure passenger safety?
That is a great question for Transit. Luckily, he's here.
Thank you.
Lawrence Perry, engineering. The length for the deceleration lane, typically, we're looking at like a 75-foot taper, 75-foot storage at a minimum. We've taken some preliminary looks at the traffic increase, and the AM peak, I believe, is going to be 21 trips, 15 out and seven in, and the PM peak was going to be 25, which would have been 11 out and 14 in. But yeah, you want to have enough storage to be able to store the vehicles turning in, so yeah, probably based on what the traffic was. But for the right turn lane only, it'd be like normally 75, 75, but it's in that curve, so we kind of got to, may have to adjust a little bit. And we'll also be looking at the site distance as well, and I think they've chosen the best location for it to be able to see the distance.
So from your vantage point, you see that the need to decelerate, turn in, it can be accommodated safely?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Callie, could you flip back to the slide where you listed some of the concerns that were raised at the neighborhood meeting? I think it's maybe two slides back.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, no, that's the slide. What has the school system, have you talked to the school system about bus pickup for the kids that might reside there?
I reached out to Transit, but I haven't heard anything back yet. As far as school capacity goes, we went, I calculated based off of our annexation model that we use, and there'd be anywhere between nine and 14 students added to this area, but at various ages.
I wondered if you had an opinion of whether a school bus would just do, make one stop at the entrance of the neighborhood, and it would not enter the neighborhood, enter the development?
Probably.
It's hard for me to say. I think sometimes they stop at the entrance. I don't think they actually turn it, but that's not for me to say. I can help you. Okay. So the proposed development doesn't have public roads, so Transit and school buses would most likely stop on Browns Mill at the road and not go into the development.
So this would be a private drive and not built to city road standards?
It would be built to standard, but it would not be dedicated to the city, so the bus system would be out on Browns Mill for public schools.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on this topic. Is the developer here, Callie?
Yes.
Todd, are you representing the developer?
Good evening. Todd Wood, 1804 Gailey Drive, Johnson City. I am the engineer. The developer is here as well. Couple things, and I can answer any questions that you have tonight. Johnson City's growing. It's not going to stop. So the question is, do you want sprawl or do you want smart growth? So if we don't allow infill development, where we already, there's already water, sewer, roads here, then we have to sprawl out, and it costs the city money, which costs all of us money as well. So this is the smart thing to do. It backs up to the interstate. Browns Mill Road is almost the entire length of the property. There's no, there's no immediate impact to any property except for the one that has the buffer. There's a major road that connects to other major roads. Honestly, from a smart growth standpoint, this one's a slam dunk. I know there are some concerns about the environment and noise and traffic, but you're going to have that anywhere. You'd still have 17 townhomes on this property. So do you want 17 here and another 30 or 40 further out, which then impacts other roads, neighborhood roads? So this just makes sense from an engineering and planning standpoint. Yeah, I'll answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Wood?
If I'm reading this sight map, there's really not much residential development close by to the property. Is that correct?
One house.
Well, that's the energy.
Yeah, no, I said that's the industry.
Yeah.
So.
And it's profit on this road. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Oh, and on the other, the turn lanes. So this is a concept plan. This is not a construction plan. The site plan even says with the location of the entrance, at time of construction, we'll have to look at site distance, the length of the turn lanes, and all that'll come out at the time of construction plan approval. But it should look generally like what you see on the plan.
Todd, let me ask you a question. As far as the proposed plan or the site plan, in looking at it, it looks like that fire trucks and stuff could not get down there to the, some of the townhouses. How, what's your proposal for that?
Which? Where there's not a roundabout or a T-stop?
It just kind of stops.
Okay. Was that one, the very first?
That very first one.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you come in and turn left, well, in this case, it's to the right of the plan, that's the clubhouse over there. So then the next one, the turnarounds, the dead ends are under 150 feet long. It's not required to have a turnaround under fire code.
Okay.
But the other ones that are longer do loop through.
Do these have individual trash pickup, or would this be dumpster? I couldn't tell.
They're dumpsters throughout this, they're just hard to see at this scale, but they're in there. And the roads are 24 feet wide, which is wide enough for fire code and fire trucks.
Any other questions for Mr. Wood?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is anyone else here to speak in favor or against the proposal? Please come forward.
My name is Andrew Whitson. I live at 3312 Butler Drive. That's my house right there. I join a border with this property about well over 900 feet that borders this property. I want to bring up a couple of points. Ms. Aldridge, you brought up the point that, how many people were in the neighborhood meeting? They said eight, right? There's a reason for that. If you go a quarter mile off of this picture to the southeast, you come to a roundabout, you go a half mile north, you, it's where it runs into Carroll Creek. It's about a one-mile stretch of road. There are exactly seven driveways. I drove it and counted. Seven driveways that connect to Browns Mill and that area. That brings me to my first point. Why are houses worth so much? It's because we have privacy, we have safety, there's large slouches of land. I have one neighbor right now. That's why I bought the house two years ago. I also want you to take that into account, and then also, what was my other one? Oh, yeah, your point about, sorry, addressing the environment. So wildlife, we have a lot of deer, turkey, small game, big game. They use about a 50-acre area in this area, and this is over 10% of it, right? The human impact, the human activity, kind of is what drives those away. It's not really the buildings themselves. If you take into that account, it kind of drives the animals not only away from that property, but from my property, the adjoining properties. You're really devastating probably 20% of the area, the habitat in that area. Going back to the seven driveways thing, sorry, getting back to my point, just putting some numbers to that. We're not going to be increasing this by 10, 20, 50% of homes that connect to that portion of road through there. We're increasing that by 650%. That's the one number I want you to take away from this, 650%. Safety, I have a 15-year-old daughter, it's going to be driving soon. I have concerns about her driving there. I also have concerns about 44 families, I guess, that have direct access to my property. I don't see any plans to put up fencing. It's, my property is valued a lot, and the reason I moved there is privacy, yeah, I have one neighbor. Maybe there was, when it was RP2, I'd have a couple more, a few more, but 44, it devastates my property value. I mean, it goes from one of the most desirable properties in Johnson City. My property tax assessment's public record. It's almost a million dollars I pay taxes on for property assessment. I mean, you'll devastate that by putting this adjoining my property. Other than that, it's the values and the community of our neighbors. Like I just met a couple folks that purchased property around. We all buy those for the same reasons. We work the land, we want to see long-term benefit of the community in those properties. This doesn't align with those values. If I go to my neighbor, now it's an HOA, a property manager, the owner's going to sell whatever they bought, walk away, long-term well-being. I mean, does it matter to them? And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Please come forward, sir. Please come forward, sir.
My name is Steve Batoff. I live at 212 Chickasaw Street. I've written a memo for y'all that summarizes my notes a little bit better, but I would still like to speak to those. These townhomes may look nice, appear nice, three-bedroom townhomes, but they're being built for a population that's already marginalized by low income. It's being put between a noisy interstate and a busy Brownsville Road. I've heard some talk tonight about Brownsville Road. That's a dangerous place right in that area. You cannot see because of the overgrowth of the shrubs that are right in the turn right there at Chickasaw Street. It's really dangerous to get out of Chickasaw Street, and it takes you quite a bit of time. You're gonna have potentially a hundred and fifteen additional vehicles that would travel to work, shop, school. Again, that steep curve on Chickasaw, overgrown landscape. All of these people are gonna need some kind of transportation. They're gonna use that road. Families are gonna have school-aged children. We talked tonight about the bus. If you look at this diagram here, the bus has one way to get in. It should be a curve through there. It should be more traffic, more lane through there, more driveway through that. Emergency vehicles are gonna have a similar problem. We had an apartment complex burned down totally at the bottom of Chickasaw Street. Emergency vehicles couldn't get there in time. Think about something like this, and some fire happening at the bottom of this right here. Residents have no recreation area, no playground, no walking space or swimming pool or green space. I looked online, and we can easily, you and I can easily find townhomes that have all those, offer all those features. These residents won't have any of that. Pedestrians, if they wanted to take a bus, are gonna have to cross Brownsville, walk up the ridge of Chickasaw. It's about a quarter of a mile or more to North Run Street. Or they're gonna take that sidewalk down to the turn area where the traffic circle is at Mountain View and Brownsville and try to cross there to go shopping or take a bus. Our neighborhood has no sidewalks. We've already experienced an increase in pedestrian traffic, crossover traffic. We're just setting ourselves up for increased traffic and potential hazard, both here on Brownsville and in our neighborhood. I wish that the commission would think about this housing request. Think about this plan and think about fewer homes with some amenities and attention to that road safety.
Thank you, Mr. Batoff.
That was pretty timely, wasn't it?
Anyone else to speak to the question? Come forward, please, ma'am. It's okay.
Don't be. We're harmless.
I'm Donna Hash, and I live at 209 Chickasaw Street, which is the neighborhood up Chickasaw on the hill there. Beautiful view. But, you know, I understand with the housing issue in Johnson City and how this city is growing. I love Johnson City. I went to ETSU years ago, and I just love it here. I understand the need. But I'm concerned mainly about the density of this with the volume of traffic on Brownsville right now. And in our meeting last week, the developers told us that Brownsville Road is not a state route, but the Transportation Department go by the state and TDOC standards and regs. But they also said there has not been a traffic study done or even a traffic count for existing traffic. I mean, why? You know, when you're gonna add this kind of more volume of traffic to this road, and you can see, look at the curves. It's so dangerous when I pull out of Chickasaw every day, just about. And the site distance there and over here on the other curve, getting more down toward the roundabout, it's dangerous. And that's my main concern. Also, I agree, you know, with Steve. And it's like, you know, I understand that we need the housing. But why so many units? Why so much additional volume of traffic put out there on that road in that very dangerous spot? And I'm just concerned for safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hash. Any other comments? Oh, yes, sir. Please, if you'll keep it brief since you've spoken once already.
Richard Roberts again.
Yes, sir.
And one of the items that was mentioned about the pickleball courts and racquetball courts was my understanding was supposed to be on the property I bought. And they, you canceled that or didn't commit to it or approve it, et cetera, on that side of Brownsville. And I know there will be more traffic with that, potentially, depending on how big it was gonna be compared to the apartments. But as one person pointed out, with the apartment complex, those first two roads cannot handle a fire truck. They can go down it, but what if, as this gentleman said, fire happens so bad that the units are aflame, and then you're getting cross-units, et cetera, and then the firemen are in danger? Because there's no turnaround. There's no connecting road going to the lower part from either one of those entries. The first entry, if you turn, and then the second before you go down, and that's the potential turnaround. So those things, plus the fact that it's brought up, the extra traffic. And Chickasaw is a cut-through road right now. That's only gonna increase people trying to get, thinking they can possibly get to their condo or townhouse quicker because of traffic coming up the road and making the turn from Roan onto Brownsville. So there's a lot, as one person said, if there hadn't been a traffic study in regards to that especially, there needs to be because the more traffic, more people pulling out, percentage goes up for wrecks, percentage goes up being hurt or killed. And that road, sometimes people fly up through there, heaven forbid. It's thirty-five, and going up, sometimes worse down, they're exceeding that by fifteen or twenty miles an hour, you know, easily.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right, commissioners?
Well, one of the things is the developer is willing to put in that sidewalk down to the turnaround or the turnabout. And as I understand it, public transportation is available on that, at that location. Is that correct?
Public transportation isn't on that. It doesn't serve that location at this time.
This location.
I think what he's saying is can they walk, can they take the sidewalk?
At the roundabout.
Oh, yes, they could take the sidewalk.
So, and what is that distance approximately? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Best I can tell, it's a reasonably short distance. So I think access to transportation is reasonably provided for. Fire safety? Yeah, the last thing we want to do is get our firemen hurt. But, you know, we have standards that make sure that we do provide for that kind of safety. And as we understand, this particular development does meet those standards.
The fire department has signed off on this, right?
I'd just like to say, I mean, it's one of the hardest things that we do. It's just our job here is to consider really what's in the best interest of Johnson City from a land use perspective. And it's a very hard thing for us here, especially when we're talking about infill development, which inevitably means that there are going to be folks adjacent to that proposed development. And it is changed. And you have circumstances like this where you have open spaces. The area's undeveloped right now, so it's very peaceful, it's very quiet, there's nothing there. And something is being proposed to be there. So as we discuss this, please don't think we're not, you know, that we're insensitive to anything you all have said we're not. We're very sensitive to that. We're considering the development, the proposal, in the context of really the city and the region as well, and we are certainly concerned about things like traffic. So, you know, just to go through from my, for whatever it's worth, for my colleagues on the commission and for folks here as well. Honestly, forty-four units, I mean, that sounds, given that there's nothing there right now, that sounds a lot. It really isn't. The trips generated, I think Lawrence talked about it, the peak trips generated morning and evening, given the background traffic, especially that exists already on Brownsville Road, will probably be barely, if at all, perceptible, honestly. It's not going to add that much burden to the street. The, I don't think there's going to be a safety concern with Brownsville here. Certainly not one that's generated by this property. The developer is adding a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane as well. So traffic is going to be able to enter the site without impeding existing oncoming traffic. And I think the location of this property as well, given the neighbors here, there's still significant buffer from this development to any adjacent, certainly any adjacent buildings there. So again, in the context of the city, I think the engineer, Mr. Wood, did touch on it. But this really is, I think, you know, to me anyway, this is exactly the kind of development that we are looking for. We're able to add some units here. These aren't apartments. These are towns. We're able to add some units here without overly burdening, without having to construct a whole bunch of new infrastructure in a manner that, I know it may not seem that way, but in a manner that really isn't going to impact the existing community that's there. So for that, for those reasons, I'm gonna be supportive of this.
Other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from RP2 to RP3.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve and recommend rezoning of RP2 to RP3 on Brownsville Road. And that would be a recommendation to go to the City Commission for their action. Further discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, I think Mr. McNamara's up for a rezoning on Nob Creek Road.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Bryce McNamara, Planner, Development Services. This is a request for rezoning at 2343 Nob Creek Road. This is the first hearing within the process. There will be a public hearing this evening. Notifications have gone out. If approved and move forward to the City Commission, the first reading would be held on July seventeenth and go forward from there. This is the aerial view of our site, highlighted in red. We're looking at the first curve of Nob Creek Road here. This is the intersection of Nob Creek and North State of Franklin, Lowe's, Coles, People's Street with Old Navy and Mardele. And then we can see Medtech Parkway going along by Franklin Woods and the Wellness Center. The request is to rezone two parcels, a total acreage of eight point four. The northernmost parcel is zoned RP3. The southernmost is R2. The request is to commonly zone these two to R3. The reason is to accommodate the expansion of the existing Westminster Presbyterian Church and to add associated parking areas. And with that reason, there is also an anticipation to remove this lot line and create a common zoning on one lot. There is a concept plan required for this rezoning request and has been provided by the applicant. Very simple. We can see faintly the existing structure here, the addition of a fellowship hall, another porch addition here and associated parking areas that do cross that existing property line that will be removed at some point. As always, any major changes to the concept plan will require additional approval via the Concept Plan Amendment process. Current conditions of the site, there is the existing structure on the southernmost parcel. This sits at the top of the hill. There are some varying steepness of slopes, mostly going down towards the north, relatively steep here. The site is mostly open. Water and sewer service are currently available along the frontage of Nob Creek Road. And with this, only be additions to the existing use. There will not be a traffic study performed. As mentioned, the current zoning of this, being two parcels currently, the top of which being RP3, the bottom of which being R2. R2 is one of the less predominant zoning districts on this segment of Nob Creek Road. We do see along the frontage of Elizabeth Drive back in this neighborhood, and then farther off the frontage of the Collector Road, we do have R2 zoning. However, we do have a collection of different multifamily zoning districts such as RP2, R4, RP3, and RP2, including the one on the subject site itself. There is also along the corridor of North State of Franklin, B4, as we get down along the Medtech Parkway area, there is MX, and then there is also MS1 in this area, as long as directly across Nob Creek in this area. The requested zoning being RP3 would be in character of these similar multifamily zoning districts in the area. Current land use, as we can see reflected by the zoning, we see more single-family residential in this location and the medical uses and commercial uses on the southern side of Nob Creek Road. Future land use map classifies this, both of these parcels, as appropriate for residential development, with those medical, technical, and institutional uses staying on the southern side. With the request staying in kind with the current zoning and keeping the residential character of that district, this would be appropriate. The Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map assigns this place type of regional mixed use, which is on the southern side of Nob Creek. Once again, the compact residential staying to the north. Looking at the characteristics of this place type, church would fall under the institutional umbrella, and it is given the more appropriate status on the slider bar. Looking at the bridge plan and given the context where it is around surrounding neighborhoods, we're looking at the land use element policy 231, the city to promote livable neighborhoods by reducing land use conflicts that negatively affect housing, thus helping to restore declining neighborhoods. Like I said, giving the context, in a residential area where there are some residences, we always like to reduce those land use conflicts. And with the anticipation of combining the lots, we could have a split-zoned lot. As far as the notification requirements for the zoning code, the letters were sent to all property owners within two hundred feet on May eighth. The signs were placed that same day, and the neighborhood meeting was held on May twentieth. There were no attendees. Staff has not received any comments or concerns from citizens at this time. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning because it is consistent with the future land use map. The rezoning eliminates the potential split-zone condition of the property, and the R3 district is similar in character to the surrounding multifamily districts, as well as providing a transitional zone from that B4 along the North State of Franklin corridor.
Questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. McNamara. All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak in favor or against the proposal? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. Commissioners, questions, discussion?
I think this is a pretty easy one for us. This is a church that's been a good corporate nonprofit citizen for over forty years. It eliminates the split zoning. It's consistent with the future land use plan. So I'll be voting in favor of it. I'll be happy to make a motion to approve the rezoning to R3.
All right, I'll take that as a motion to approve the rezoning from R2 and RP3 to R3 on Nob Creek Road, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that it's fun to start to see the Horizon 2045 Land Use Map as a tool we can utilize for these types of conversations. So thanks for listening. for including that in your presentation.
Yeah, compliments to staff for doing that.
It's also refreshing to see that a, a, a Christian denomination is actually growing. That's, that's very refreshing.
All right, hearing no further discussion. I don't think I hear any. I'll have the roll called, please.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Thank you very much. Ms. Putney, I think you're up. We've got a final plat with a variance.
Bless you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Riley Putney and I'm the Development Coordinator. This is a request for a final plat in variance for a property located at thirty twenty-five Mayfield Drive. Just to orient the commission, the request is for a three lot subdivision in an R two zoning district as outlined in red. McKinley Road and Burlington Mills are roughly to the northeast of the property. The original parcel has, is a one lot subdivision and they are just returning the lot lines to what it was originally platted years back. So, meeting those requirements is why there is a variance request tonight to the lot width to depth ratio of three to one. It does exceed that by roughly a four to one ratio. There's two existing houses that will be removed within ninety days of the final plat being approved to bring it into conformance. There are no new roads being proposed. All access is still off of Mayfield Drive and the subdivision of the three lots meets the R two requirements of lot square footage and proposed setbacks. Again, a little bit just more about the variance. All three of the lots would require the variance for lot width to depth ratio, which just is to promote, avoid long, narrow lots for new subdivisions and to increase accessibility within the city due to the fact that there are no new streets being proposed and they are returning to their original lot lines. Staff does recommend the approval of the variance in the final plat.
All right, questions for staff?
It appears that there's a number of other lots along that street that have the same challenge. Is that correct?
Correct. So, the, it, many of the other lots, adjoining lots, have the similar characteristics of the original subdivision. So, they all, it just is matching what is already there.
Will the city require any kind of bond for the removal of the existing structures?
No. So, how that would work is staff, once the plat is approved, would put it in a calendar for ninety days to do a site visit to ensure that those properties, it's a mobile home and a dilapidated barn, have been removed within that ninety-day period. And if they are not removed, then we send them a reminder and move forward with that process.
Commissioners, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, again, I think this is pretty straightforward. Recommend that we, I move that we approve the final plat and grant the variance request.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the final plat subdivision and with a variance around the three to one ratio of lot depth to width. And a second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Putney. Our next item, please.
Thank you. This item is another plat in front of the commission for preliminary plat approval for the Thompson Field subdivision on Thompson Road. This location is within the county. However, it is within our planning region, so it is subject to our subdivision requirements. It is for a seventeen lot, single-family home development. In the county, it is zoned A one, which allows for single-family homes with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. All of the proposed lots are well above that with the smallest lot being roughly seventeen and a half thousand square feet. City water and sewer are available for the site. City water will need to be extended a hundred and sixty feet. Widening of Thompson Road, Thompson Road will be required and due to it being in the county and the city will not be maintaining the roads or the, or proposed sidewalks, we are not requiring sidewalks for the development. Just some photographs of the property, Thompson Road there, that will need to be widened into the property and the vacant development. It is a relatively flat development that is going to be developed and just the, they will be widening Thompson Road to our local street standards. So, there will be a fifty-foot right away. And staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
All right, questions for staff?
Who is responsible for widening that, that road?
It will be in conjunction with the developer and the county since it is a county road. So, they will be working together to widen that.
Does the county require any type of decal lanes on a road like that?
So, I have submitted the plat to the county for their review and they had no comments regarding a decal lane. They just, in conjunction, wanted Thompson Road to be widened and will be working with the developer.
All right, any further questions or discussion amongst the commissioners? I'll entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Move approval.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat as presented. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Before we move on to the next item, may I ask for a five-minute recess just for a bio break? We will return to session at seven o'clock. Thank you. I'll call us back to order at seven minutes, one minute after 7:00. Ms. Hodges, I believe you're going to present a report on Horizon 2045. It's reached a milestone.
It has. Commissioners, Chairman, I am really happy to be here because we have finally made it. You guys have diligently worked with staff for about two years on this project. And what we're, what Kimley Horn will be presenting tonight is kind of an overview of where we are with the Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan. We are at the beginning of the public process, so in that three phases, we're in the final phase, and this is the beginning of that. We will be having a public hearing on this on July 7th, but I wanted to start this off by having an opportunity just to get the information out there. As you know, this is the 30-day review period for the public, so it is available on the website, which is horizon2045jc.com for all of you watching at home, in case you want to go on, read the 212 pages that are, that are there. But it's a really, the way it's put together, it makes it very easy to get through, and you can see the policies that you guys have been looking at, the future land use map. There's also a place for, and Jonathan will talk about it more, but a place for people to kind of use a Google map and kind of go in to see maybe what their property, what the future land use is for their property. But without that, Jonathan Whitehurst is here from Kimley Horn, and he's going to be giving the formal presentation.
Thank you. Welcome back, Jonathan.
Hello, everyone. I will say that I'm happy to be here. I'm always happy to come to Johnson City. I'm extra happy now for the reasons that Whitney said, that we are at the, kind of the home stretch, and that's not because I want to finish this plan and run and never return to Johnson City. But this type of process really should be celebrated by you all. It should be celebrated by City Commission, and it should be celebrated by all the people that participated in this. I, too, was thrilled to see it being used already, and we do think that it is going to be a very good tool for the city to be talking about these types of decisions that you all have to make on a regular basis. I'm going to keep my remarks relatively short. I can do that in part because you all have been so involved throughout this process, so thank you for the time that you all have invested. I want to provide a quick overview of engagement, talk about the future land use map, which was already kind of featured a little bit tonight, and then talk about the strategies, the actions that we wrap around that future land use map to give this overall process, this plan, a little bit more strength for decisions that are being made, not just by you all, but by staff and the various departments. And then we'll talk a little bit about the next steps, which Whitney has alluded to. So we are, we're coming up on the two-year anniversary of getting this process underway. That's not necessarily a lengthy process. These things take time, especially with the amount of community conversations that have occurred throughout this process. We think about the planning process in these three phases. That Phase 1 is envisioned where we're asking big-picture questions about what we want Johnson City to become and what we want to potentially avoid Johnson City becoming. In Phase 2, we roll up our sleeves and get to work, actually putting the plan in place. And then as we sit here in Phase 3, it's about putting a structure around the plan itself to make sure that we have the implementation strategies in place to make this document as useful as possible. In terms of engagement, I think, you know, folks hinted that people would be willing to insert their voice in the process at the beginning, and we certainly saw that come to be true. So we asked folks to co-create this plan through a variety of means, asking them to engage in the process in ways that were comfortable for them. You can see kind of categorically the groups that were involved. Of course, you all and City Commission. We invited the public. We had great participation by our advisory committee. Staff was heavily involved, and then we certainly wanted to reach out to the public throughout this process. If you were to put numbers around that, almost 2,000 touch points, 20,000 individual data points, so every time somebody put a dot on a map or answered a question on a survey, we recorded that as a data point. 20,000 data points is something to be very, very proud of. Over 800 written comments, that's a lot of comments for us as, you know, extension of staff to go through, but we're happy to do that. I want to call your attention to that number of 900-plus. So we actually tried to calculate how many hours of community investment went into this process, and when we crunched the numbers, almost 1,000 hours of community time was invested in this. And of course, the project website that Whitney mentioned is still active. We want to increase those views. We want to increase the number of unique users to that website, especially now that the plan is there and available to be viewed. The stakeholder groups and topics just kind of spanned everything that you think that this plan should touch on, and so those are captured in the overall process. And then we wanted to, as I mentioned, make sure that people were able to engage in this process in ways that were comfortable to them. And so one of the ways that we did that was actually go to where the people are. And so these pop-up events from, from May to September in 2024 was really our way of making sure that we weren't resting entirely on somebody coming to a public meeting, though people came to a public meeting, and we weren't requiring people to only engage online, though people were happy to take our online engagement activities. But just going out into the community, you can see over 700 people were touched as part of this process just by going to, you know, the Rotary Club or a baseball game and the like. So let's talk about the path to the future land use map. The future land use map really is the capstone product of your growth management plan. It's the most tangible piece of the overall plan, but again, we don't stop there, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. The process that we took to arrive at that future land use map, we created the Community Characteristics Report. That's our understanding of existing and projected conditions across everything, from housing and land use to transportation and utilities, all economic development, all of those topics are captured in that Community Characteristics Report. All of that Phase 1 engagement when we talk about envisioned went into the guiding statements and the planning themes. You'll see those planning themes are the organizational structure of the overall plan, so those are critically important. That's also our way of making sure that when we, when we take a step back from this process, that we can, you know, speak confidently that the plan itself is reflective of the community's input. If you recall, in some of our work sessions, we had that conceptual growth strategy, that high-level view of taking our understanding of existing conditions where we want to go in the future and kind of spatially representing some of those guiding statements and planning themes. That was that high-level conceptual growth strategy. We couldn't stop there if we did that. When, you know, this is adopted and somebody comes to you and you need to make a decision, you wouldn't have the detail that you needed. And so that's where the future land use map comes into play. As I mentioned, the conceptual growth strategy, higher level, very, very kind of rough around the edges, so to speak. We want you to kind of blur your eyes when you're looking at that, to really kind of see the reflection of the, the community's input and kind of segue into the future land use map. Now, the future land use map, as you all know, is built using these 11 place types. We call them place types, not land use categories, because we want to kind of think about growth and development a little bit more broadly than just put a house here, put a business there. And so the place types is trying to give you all in the city overall a little bit more direction in terms of the form and function of the land uses and, that are occurring, you know, and are changing over time. The future land use map that you see reflected in the report has gone through quite a bit of review and refinement. I think you all played a prominent role in that, as well as staff, and certainly our advisory committee. And so here is the future land use map and the reflection of those 11 place types. We included this in the report, this place type summary. I think it can be helpful when you're thinking about the 11 different place types to kind of consider those kind of in comparison to one another. And so here with this summary table, you can see everything that is on those slider bars in the report, just summarized in a single location in the report. Also, call your attention to kind of the area calculations there, so you can see both in terms of total acreage as well as a percentage of the study area, the breakdown of each of those place types. Again, we didn't stop there. We wanted to make sure that we wrapped that future land use map with a set of actions and strategies and gave, you know, a pretty clear blueprint for implementation. And so that's the better part of the overall document. I mentioned that the, the plan is organized around those planning themes, so there's eight themes that serve as the organizing structure of the overall plan. We have the planning themes, and then within each planning theme, we have a little bit of background information. We have objectives, policies, and actions. There's dozens, if not hundreds, of actions that are in the plan, so quite a bit of guiding information that is provided in the overall plan. The way that those actions are organized, they're organized as plans. So in some cases, the comprehensive plan, the growth management plan, it stops short of probably going to some of the detail that could be helpful down the road. And so in those cases, we recommend additional plan. In other ways, we're recommending programs for the city to consider specific policies and in some cases, physical projects. So the, the plans, the programs, the policies, and the projects collectively are the actions that make up the, the overall growth management plan. We don't want this document to, to be adopted in a few months and just sit on the shelf, and so the implementation plan is a critically important element of that. And I'll draw your attention, so the, there's, there's explanation of the type of each of these actions. So for the hundreds of actions that are in the plan, we tell you what type of action it is. We talk about who is responsible for implementing that. We talk about the timeframe for implementation, and in some cases, you'll see a target on some of those actions. Those are things that, that through our conversations throughout this process, we know are kind of high on the list for the community, and so those are identified as priority actions. You can see the layout here just as an example. So you have the overall policy that's shaded in that lighter purple, and then each of those action items are listed, and you can see the, the type of action, whether it's a priority, the timeframe, the responsible entities. And then I didn't mention this, but we're also talking in general terms the amount of resources that are required for each and every one of those actions, both in terms of the time that might be needed to be invested, as well as if there would be a cost associated with that, that spelled out there as well. So in terms of next steps, we hinted that we're kind of near the process. As Whitney mentioned, we are in the middle of the 30-day review period. That will close on July 8th, and we'll be back in front of you all shortly thereafter to talk about, you know, adoption of this. And then it'll go through the process of the various readings with City Commission for adoption. With that, happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
I want to step in for just a second, just because some of you weren't available for the joint work session, and I wanted to talk through a little bit of how we were handling kind of that timeframe between getting feedback and making sure that y'all know feedback. So on a probably, let's say, week and a half to two-week basis, both the Planning Commission and City Commission will be getting an email of the comments that we have received, so that you have an understanding as we go along of what we've been receiving and how that's been either implemented in the plan or, or how we've, you know, kind of done what we needed to do with that, how we've responded to that comment. So you'll be getting those. I would say your first one will be likely sometime at the end of next week. Just to kind of expect an email from me that says, here's your spreadsheet of what, of what changes we have been asking for, because staff has reviewed this on all levels of staff, if they had a particular interest in that area, in one of those planning themes, or had responded in those policies, made sure that they got copies to, to put in their comments about whatever that they need. So when it comes to the public hearing, you will be, next month, it will be open for public comment, so we, we will open that up with the three minutes, and then you will adopt and certify. That's actually how the language reads in the statute. And then that will get sent to the planning, sorry, the City Commission for their adoption process. We will end up putting it out, it's not on the slide, but an additional legal ad, just to make sure that we're covering all the bases. I want to make sure everybody knows. And so we've also discussed in the joint hearing if there are significant changes, we know that that might need to have some back and forth. But I don't anticipate any of those types of changes just because of the broad nature of this document, and we really haven't seen a lot of comment come back that would be something of, of true significance. Just wanted to end there to make sure everybody had what was at the joint meeting.
Yeah, Whitney, did we incorporate, one of the most substantive exercises that we did was going through the policy objectives. We created a spreadsheet, I think, where we each individually had the opportunity to make comments, and we tracked, we tracked those comments. Is that spreadsheet updated in, in that package? I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look through it yet.
Yes, the comments that, every comment that had been made by the Planning Commission and by the, the city staff.
So the side, so side by side, we can compare the policy objectives with the comments that were made.
Yes, and so, as you know, there are certain things that we try to take everybody's comment and do the best that we can to merge and make sure that that is getting to the value of the community, so, and what can be done.
Kind of a follow-up to that, these periodic reports that you're going to be sending us, will, will y'all have already made a decision about how to respond to it? Yes, no, maybe?
If there's something that we can, if it's something that doesn't require discussion and perhaps may just be something very simple to change, like some of the comments have been very simple, like please change out this picture, or we'll go ahead and do those. But if they need further discussion, then we might, there are some that we have tabled to say this needs discussion. But at least if those have, if the changes have been made, you'll know what changes they are, and you can say, hey, let's, let's talk about that one again.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? It has been two years of challenge and reward. I thank you, Whitney, and I thank Kimley Horn. You've been very patient, you've been very thorough, and you've been very open, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, job well done.
All right, any other questions for staff? Any other business before the commission? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting at 18 minutes after 7:00.